I'm going to ask the newest member of the senior leadership team, Mr. Sloggin, to lead us in the touch of allegiance.
I am the president of the United States of America and due to the problems of the current state, my mission underlined, indivisible with the routine and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sloggin. Are there any modifications to the agenda the board would like to make? If not, we will move into recognitions and achievements. Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. So, we are extremely pleased this evening as it has become the board's tradition inter-June meeting that we bring and recognize the recipients of the superintendent art awards. During the year, we've got two students that were able to join us this evening. But a little bit of context to this, I think I do share this every year, that, well, this is a recognition of students who have achieved in the visual arts. I think this opportunity each year to do this recognition really serves as a reminder of the importance that the arts have in our programs in District 200, whether they be the kind of the range of performing arts programs that we have or visual arts programs. I think we're incredibly fortunate to not only have very talented students, but to have a school board that very much continues to keep that an integral part of our programs. So, thank you for that. I'm pleased to recognize and ask two students to come up to the podium to join us. So, each year, we recognize three students at the elementary, middle school level. That happens as a part of the PTA reflections program that happens a little bit kind of the tail end of the fall. And then, I get an opportunity each year to go to the art show both at Wheaton North and Wheaton Warrenville South and select a piece of art at each of those schools that gets honored. All five of the pieces of art are in the back of the commons area, so I would encourage everybody, if you didn't get an opportunity on your way in, to take a look on your way out. And again, some really talented piece of art. So, I'm going to first ask Leah Austin to come up and join us. Leah is a student at Hubble Middle School. And Leah, do you want to, can you just very, very quickly tell the, what a little bit about the piece of art that you created?
So, I took a picture in Washington, D.C., on the mall. There was, we were sitting on a bench and there was just a bunch of like rocks and gravel, so I kind of just kind of laid down on the ground and just kind of set my phone there and then just kind of took the picture. So, it got cool, like you can kind of see the background is kind of blurred, then it focuses on the rocks, so.
Very good. So, congratulations. Would you please come up and the board would like to honor you. And Madeline Levi. There you are. Come on up. This is a student at Wheaton Warrenville South who had not only the amazing picture that I chose or the painting I chose in the back, but had a whole portfolio of artwork. So, would you like to tell everybody a little bit about your portfolio?
Yeah, so, I did, that piece is on one of my rabbits I have at home. And the idea behind it was something reflective and so I was, the idea was kind of like reflections of innocence because she is just, you know, like my innocent rabbit. And then, the, I thought it would be a cool element to have the mirror as well. But yeah, and then I did have a concentration as well. And we sent in a couple of the pieces from my best works and that was one of the pieces I sent in too, so I was pretty proud of that.
Congratulations. Would you please come up to the board? There are three other pieces of artwork in the back. Elena Murray, who's a student at Bauer Elementary, McKenna Sutton, who's at Pleasant Hill Elementary, and Rebecca Lang at Wheaton North High School, who are not able to join us this evening, but again, their artwork is in the back. So, thank you, Mr. Roman, for allowing us this opportunity to recognize our students.
It's an opportunity we all enjoy, Dr. Schuler. The next item on the agenda is public comments. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or a comment on an agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values for your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district and public input in a variety of venues is very helpful. Board must protect the stability and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name, and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Paulson will be timing you. At the two and a half minute mark, he will raise his hand with the yellow button in it, and then at the three minute mark, he'll simply raise his hand. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat and present your comments to us in writing. The first speaker I have signed up is Sidney West Street.
Hello and happy summer. I think summer begins when the pools open. Good day. My name is Sidney West Street. I live at 923 Santa Rosa Avenue in Wheaton. On April 16th, I received an email informing me of recent changes to policy 7.40. Exactly one week later, a change up or a petition was started in response to those changes and within 48 hours, 500 people had signed a petition. I offer you that number, 500, not as a sign of that number of homeschoolers in the community. In fact, on the contrary, I offer you that number to show the breadth of support for homeschoolers in our community. You see, over the past 17 years, policy 7.40, or the private school policy, has become woven into the fabric of our community. You received an email from my friend and yours, Jennifer Merk, on Friday, April 27th. She properly observed the school district's quote "long history of working collaboratively with homeschool parents to effectively serve their children." She goes on to mention that quote "she respects the choices that other parents make to educate their children in many ways." We can be proud of our community when we see a champion of our public schools also respecting the educational choices of others. We can be proud of our community when those who choose or need to homeschool also desire integration with the public institutions. And we can be proud that few walls divide us and inclusivity has carried the day. The inclusive nature of the original policy should not be overlooked. Looking ahead, I ask you, the board, to include members of the homeschool community as you forge a path towards resolution. The best solution will allow affected students to continue participating in extracurricular activities and athletics. The best solution will call for collaboration between the administration and members of the homeschool community. And the best solution will continue the spirit of inclusion that our community has enjoyed for nearly two decades. Let's keep that good thing going. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker, the next speaker I have signed up is Dan Myers.
Hi, Dan Myers, Wheaton resident. I had a chance to read through Dr. Schuler's response to some of the board's questions. And after going through them, it became clear to me, which is something I already knew, this issue is really not with IHSA. This is ultimately a local policy issue that we have to sit down and resolve together. To the extent there's an issue with the transcript, the quality of the transcript, it seems like such an easy fix that can be annotated in any way you want to distinguish where these classes are being taken, whether at home, an online class, or the school. They don't need to be represented to be District 200 classes on the transcript. The rest of the issues that I see in here, again, are local policy issues that we can work through together as a community, and we stand ready to do that with you. Thank you.
The next speaker I have signed up is Gabby Resick.
Hi again. My name is Gabby Resick. I'm a District 200 resident. I want to thank each of the board members for their time and attention that they've given this matter on the recent revisions to policy 7.40. At the last board meeting, Mr. Paulson stated that he quote "didn't understand the impact on the kids." I wanted to share what that impact will be for some of the kids if the board moves forward with disallowing homeschoolers to participate in sports at the high school level. My son, Sam Resick, has been playing baseball for 11 years. He played baseball this year for Wheaton North and was on the varsity dive team. His high school career will be cut unnecessarily short in both of these sports. Rebecca DeCosola is a rising senior. She swam at Wheaton Warrenville South for the last three years. She will be unable to swim her senior year. Her sister, Rachel, swam this past year. She's a freshman. Seth Riske is a rising junior. He's been on cross country and track for the last two years. Bella Fenn is a freshman soccer player at Wheaton North. And Charney McGaddam has played tennis the last two years at Wheaton North, and he was not allowed to play this year because of this situation. One thing I haven't heard Dr. Schuler or Dr. Ramar say during all of this is, "I know this is complicated, but I'm going to try really hard to make this work," so as not to have a negative impact on these students in our district. I'm asking the board to consider these students in our district and repeal the changes to policy 7.40 until a committee can be formed to discuss the matter further. Thank you.
The next speaker I have signed up is Jan Shaw.
Good evening, Jan Shaw. My topic was raises for the administration. Last month, they gave the teachers their raises, and when you look at that stuff and you're all plotting yourself because you managed to get a contract signed a month early without a strike even being threatened, who is going to threaten a strike when the teachers are getting on nothing? They gave one lame change so that those who are not yet at a master's degree will have slightly smaller increases for their education. That was it. And in exchange, they get slightly larger than inflation, most likely, across the board raises for everybody. And they get some other sort of raise for when they take individual classes that roughly appropriate things. Anyway, the administration raises are buried in the consent agenda. I started looking at most of them at 2%. There were three people that had more than 2%, two of which started in August, but only worked 11 months last year. Most likely, that's really only getting a 2%. But Ms. Malatino, a public relations person, I passed out what her raises had been. She's getting almost 10% this year. That job didn't even exist until 2010. And at that point, it was public relations. At this point, she's been given a job title, communications director. She has an assistant. They have a budget for which they do things like retirement dinners, and in the past, I know they have given out gifts, all sorts of things. It all seems to go around stuff with the adults, not for the students. And money raised for schools is supposed to go to students, not for the adults. And I don't understand how giving the adults more money for doing the same job does anything for the students. I don't understand how gifts for adults does anything for the students. My kids' attendance is low here. We used to get a once a year, maybe once a quarter letter from the district, and now we get a once a week letter via email. Most of it's garbage. I mean, I look at it, I scan it, I delete it. It's very rare there's anything I'm actually interested in. She also helped do that, engaged 200 a while back. You know, we wanted to hear from the community what we wanted to hear about. And I remember getting a little flyer in advance that gave some ideas things we could talk about. And of course, the first meeting, the main thing everybody was talking about was Common Core. Common Core had never made it. Is that my end of my time or do I get to keep going?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Anyway, Ms. Malatino is getting almost a 10% raise this year. I would really like to know how you view justify that. What is a job for public relations that isn't even necessary for the education of students? Thank you.
I'd like to remind everyone that I've asked that your statements be not personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. My next speaker is Jennifer Kang.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Kang and my family and I live in Wheaton. I would like to speak to you about policy 7.40, and I thank you for this opportunity to do so. I want to join my voice with those others who are requesting the revisiting of the new policy until a committee or some other venue can be formed to study the issue from all sides. My own personal interest in this issue is great. My family and I are longtime residents of the western suburbs, my husband Tony being a graduate of Glen Bart South. We have lived in the area our entire married life of 18 years, popping from Glen Ellen to Wheaton to Winfield and now back to Wheaton. I'd like to share a bit of our story. We lived in Winfield for over 10 years, up until two years ago, when our son was getting close to high school age. We had homeschooled him for most of his school career. We planned to continue this in high school and had heard wonderful things about the partnership and welcoming attitude of District 200 to homeschoolers. This was so solid in our minds that we decided to move back into District 200 so that our son could participate in extracurriculars at one of the high schools. We also planned to enroll him in a few classes, though we now require five, which hardly leaves much room for homeschooling. That said, last summer, we found a lovely house in North Wheaton and purchased it. We proudly told our new neighbors that one of the reasons we moved into the area was for our son to participate at Wheaton North. In fact, he had already been participating in summer camps with the sports team he hoped to play on, and the coach was most welcoming about the prospect of having him on the team when he would be a freshman, even though he would be primarily homeschooling. In all our interactions, actually, with North, they were very welcoming and kind. It was fun to see his virgining school pride already. I noticed over the past few months, when he would go over to the Wheaton Sports Center to work out, he would often wear one of his Wheaton North Falcons t-shirts that he already had. We also have registered him for two classes to begin this coming fall, and we're looking forward to our family's tenure as Falcons. Sadly, we felt that the rug was pulled out from under us when we received word of the change in policy, which would preclude our son from participating in extracurriculars at North unless we more than doubled his on-campus course load. As you can see, this issue is close to home for us, indeed changing our trajectory in very significant ways. Therefore, we appreciate this opportunity to share this personal anecdote with you. We know there are many angles to consider in this issue, but hope that the door can remain open, as it has in the past, for homeschoolers who want to be active members of the District 200 schools as participants in the extracurricular programs. Thank you.
The next speaker to sign up is John DeCosola.
Good evening. My name is John DeCosola. My family's been in District 200 for 10 years now. First off, I want to thank you for your service and if you're willing to take another look at policy 7.40 after you're in order for impact in the community. And thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. There are many reasons that I am grateful to live in this great country, but one of them is the ability to home educate my children. This is illegal in many other countries and is a freedom that I cannot take for granted. I am grateful to live in Illinois, which gives me the ability, but also the responsibility, to choose how we educate our children. And I'm grateful to live in District 200 that recognizes that homeschool students, even though not full-time at public schools, should be allowed to be included in the broader community in extracurricular activities and sports to the benefit of all. In fact, when we moved this past fall, we only looked at homes to keep us within District 200 so that our children could continue to participate and contribute to the Wheaton Co-op swim team. And we were sorry that our homeschool friends in Glen Ellen could not have the same level of participation in their community that we enjoy. Looking at Frigidares Schuler's letter from June 8th, it appears that my daughters, Rebecca and Rachel, both swimmers here tonight, are two of the three homeschool students competing in IHSA government activities in Wheaton Warrenville South. I'd like to address three aspects of the issue as a part of our situation. I can only speak for my family, but I think that you would get similar response from other homeschool families that you spoke with. IHSA policy on homeschool students eligibility says that homeschool students can participate and that the student must be granted credit for their work taken either at the member's school or in a program that approves. And then, there's been much debate about where the credit must be granted, whether at the high school or just for the homeschool. From our perspective, our children are homeschooled, and as per Illinois law, we will be granting them a diploma. We want our children to be able to participate in extracurricular activities at the high school, but do not expect, nor do we want, credit towards graduating public high school. Second, both my daughters attended Greenhouse Co-School, but I do not believe that this is the same as a private school as IHSA looks at them, as it does not grant a diploma. Our children are homeschooled, so which includes taking classes at Greenhouse, online, at COD, and as I stated, we will be granting them the diploma. Furthermore, Greenhouse does not have any sports teams and is not governed by IHSA in that way. Third, there's a concern of how to determine if a homeschool student is eligible to participate in sports, either from a grade or attendance perspective. Just as homeschool parents have the obligation to meet state standards in order to grant a diploma, I believe that in the same way, we are responsible for reporting whether or not they meet the athletic requirements. If you need this information in a more formalized way, we can certainly discuss how we can help with that. My eldest daughter, Rebecca, does bachelor degree in humanities and science classes from Greenhouse, AP computer science online, and Spanish at COD. She's a year-round swimmer, has been a full-fledged member of the Wheaton Co-op varsity team since a freshman year. She even holds an all-time top 10 in the 50 free, and she and her friends are disappointed and upset that she can't swim with them in a couple of months her senior year. Their shared goal is to make state together. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker I have signed up is Tom Spasic.
My name is Tom Spasic, and I again want to thank you for your service toward the community and the openness that you have to hearing our commentary. Every policy has potential for unintended consequences, as the board has discovered in policy 7.40. On May 19th, I had the privilege of participating in a very unusual commencement exercise. Every one of the graduates had taken significant coursework at Greenhouse during their high school years, but what made this commencement ceremony unusual is that every student was presented with a diploma from their mother or father, along with words of affirmation about the things that they saw in their child. It's a beautiful, beautiful ceremony. Not one of those diplomas, or any other diploma, bears the name of Greenhouse Christian Co-School. As co-school, we assist homeschoolers, home educators, in their education of their children. We're not the school. We are a co-school, which is a term, frankly, which we coined recently and we're kind of amazed by and show up in your policy. But as a co-school, we come alongside and assist. There are a lot of things that look like a school, but we are providing assistance to private homeschools. Co being the operative part of that phrase. We collaborate with parents in providing what their students need to be fully educated. It's our privilege to do this. It's something we take seriously. We are the only co-school in District 200. There are four policies, 7.40 specifically targets, the families served by the Greenhouse. And it's odd to me that when the district noticed quote "that specific names continued to appear as providers for courses" and quote "that no effort was made to contact said providers to discover the exact nature of how things work." This is, of course, assuming that Greenhouse was one of those specific names that kept appearing. So now, we're left with unintended consequences from a new policy. As it stands, as it's written, a full-time Wheaton Warrenville South student who enrolls for an after-school social dance elected at the co-school by merit, then he disqualified from participating in IHSA activities in District 200. A Wheaton North student who takes a Latin course at Greenhouse because Latin is no longer available within the district would by merit of that fact be unable to participate in IHSA activities. Now, there are certainly larger questions to be addressed, and I use these small examples of why we believe the policy should be revisited with the help of a cross-section of the community. So, as I finish, I do want to applaud you again for your willingness to address these questions seriously. Thank you.
The next speaker on the list is Cheryl Olney-Zach.
Cheryl Olney-Zach. Thank you again for taking the time and your efforts in looking at policy 7.40. My daughter, Abby, was a freshman track runner this year at Wheaton North and homeschooled. And from the last month's meeting, it was very apparent from both sides that we are all here because we love education. And the other point too is, that has come to mind, is that we want integrity in the process, and I applaud, you know, the board and the school district for wanting to do that. So, I briefly just want to comment that how the process for us was very, it was done very easily and through the administration, we walked through quite quickly. And it may be something that the board isn't aware of, but we initially, when Abby wanted to join track, we just emailed the vice principal and started the process of the paperwork. From there, all we had to do was submit the course descriptions. They weren't thorough enough, so I went back and filled in some more information. And from there, I had to align notes with the Illinois state standards. So, that can be a little tricky if you're not familiar with them. I'm a former teacher, so I was able to plug those in. So, from there, it was only about two or three emails and the process was complete. And I wish you a great year to share in track. So, thank you.
The next speaker on the list is Beth McMillan.
Good evening. My name is Beth McMillan, and I have spent most of my life in District 200. Growing up, I attended 200 Elementary, Middle, and High Schools, and I raised my family here. I would like to start by thanking Dr. Schuler and his staff for putting together the materials that were online. A review of the materials leads to four main points. First, the IHSA does not want to get involved. As long as the district has a program that provides homeschooled students with at least five classes of credit, and as long as everyone complies with that program, the IHSA cannot critique or limit such a program. So, the IHSA is not an issue here. Second, about transcripts. Some are concerned that providing credit for homeschool classes might diminish the integrity of a District 200 transcript, but this is not the case. The transcripts that the district provides to the homeschoolers are not the same as the transcripts for the full-time students. The transcripts that reflect homeschooled credits are marked and named differently, and so they read differently. A college won't be fooled, and this is okay. And, the district's ability to make this lesser quality transcript for classes taken outside of the schools is already in place. See the regulation page in the back of your information packet that you have. Third, in another policy, 6.310, the district limits full-time students from taking more than a couple of classes outside of their school. This is unnecessary, and I would suggest that policy 6.310 be revised to remove the cap. We live in an age of many educational choices and have access to professionals and a variety of classes in every subject. So, if full-time students want to take outside classes, let them, and they can get the same lesser quality transcript regarding those classes. Finally, it is impossible to address fairly all of the concerns at a meeting like this. I ask the board to direct the administration to create a committee that includes representatives of the homeschooling community. It is that committee who should draft the next policy so we don't end up back in the same situation. Thank you.
The next speaker I have signed up is Rusty Pop.
Good evening. My name is Rusty Pop, and I'm almost 30-year resident of Wheaton. Thank you for this opportunity. For the past several meetings, and again tonight, a large contingent of homeschool parents and students have and students have come and asked the board to reconsider this Policy 7.40. The back-to-back agenda items of community engagement and Policy 7.40 this evening provides you, the board, a rare opportunity. You can discuss your plans for community engagement and immediately show your sincere commitment to it in a practical way. The last policy worked for 17 years because it was a collaborative effort with community engagement. Working together again, we can find a better solution than the changes recently passed. As you discussed tonight, we are asking you to repeal the recent changes so the kids can play this coming year and that you will then form a committee with representatives of the homeschool community, the board, and the administration to update this policy in a way that's acceptable to all. Thank you.
Erica, is there a second page of sign up? That completes the public comments for tonight on agenda items. We will now move to the superintendent's report, Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Just a couple of things that I wanted to share with the board this evening under my report. One is you've got a couple of agenda items where the board is accepting, again, donations to the school district. We made updated for this school year that we've just finished, 1718 school year. We've generously accepted a little over $312,000 in donations. That's primarily from PTA groups, grant opportunities, Student Excellence Foundation as well as private donations. And again, we could not do the work that we do if we did not have this level of support. So thank you to everybody for that. Mr. Paulson's timer was actually not a timer. I just want to explain a little bit of the button that he was using to help keep track of time today. Lowell Elementary School going into next year is celebrating its 100-year anniversary as a school. So there are a bunch of activities that that school community has planned into next year, but this is a button that they have begun to distribute within their community to commemorate that. They're going to be participating in a couple of parades this summer and they've got some other activities planned through the fall to commemorate that event. So I just wanted to share that with the board. At our last Board of Education meeting, one of the items that the board approved was a parameters resolution for the restructure of, restructure refunding of Phase 3 of your debt service plan. Two things happened since that meeting. One, we participated in an updated ratings call and as a result of that rating call, our credit rating as a school district was brought up a notch. So we are now just one notch below the highest rating. We're AA stable. Did I say that right, Mr. Farley? AA plus, I'm sorry. AA plus. And so that certainly helped when those bonds went out on the competitive market. I think as a result of that upgrade in our bond rating as well as just hitting the market on a favorable day, the bonds got bought at a rate that actually increased your projected savings by a little bit over half a million dollars for the district. So that's money that will not be collected as part of our long-term debt service payments. So again, thank you for that. Mr. Farley, I want to remind you what the interest rate was. It was a little over 2.12. So that's very favorable to what we thought that it might be. Summer projects got kicked off this week. If you stop by Bauer Elementary, you're going to see the front entry area ripped up, some flooring improvements already underway. Go by Pleasant Hill, a ton of paving work going. The whole parking lot is ripped up. Woodyar Elementary School has the front entryway underway. So we've got construction projects at 14 of our buildings this summer all actively underway and so we're continuing to hope for good weather that allows us to continue to make progress. And Mr. Robinson, thank you for managing 14 different construction projects around the district. I know it's going to be a busy summer for you. Also started extended school year. That has in the past, I believe, been at Bauer, but because of all the work that's happening at Bauer this summer between the entry area and all of the flooring improvements is actually here at Monroe. So that got kicked off today and again, exciting to see the school year continue to extend. And then I have just one final introduction that I wanted to make this evening when the board gets to the personnel report. One of the recommendations on that report is for a new principal at Woodyar Elementary School that will replace Dr. Salagi as he comes to the district office next year. So Katie Schaefer-Meyer, as he is sitting right next to Chris. Katie, would you mind standing up and waving? Would come to us if approved, saying from Yorkville Elementary School, she's been elementary principal for quite a while, brings phenomenal resume to us. So I'm excited to have her. And that's it.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler on this report? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Please bear with me. Number one, acceptance of gift from Roaring Club of Wheaton, the morning club. Two, acceptance of gift from Wheaton Junior High School's Alumni Club Youth Wrestling Fund of the New Page Foundation. Three, acceptance of gift for staff as social thinking enhancement program summer camp. Four, approval of high school applications and writing textbook. Five, approval of high school college literacy skills textbook. Six, approval of fast bridge system. Seven, approval of mileage reimbursement rate for the 2018-19 school year. Eight, approval of IHSA annual renewal. Nine, approval to purchase driver's education vehicles from lease. Ten, approval of driver education simulators request for proposal. Eleven, approval of waste and recycling services contract. Twelve, approval of snack vending contract renewal. Thirteen, approval of the resolution ascertaining the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed in public works of said school district. Fourteen, approval of liability insurance renewal with the CLIC. Fifteen, approval of workers' compensation renewal with SELF. Sixteen, approval of bills payable in payroll. Seventeen, approval of minutes, May 9, 2018, open and closed. June 1, 2018, special meeting, open and closed. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to January 2017 as allowable by law. And eighteen, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want to move from the consent agenda?
Yes, like 18, item 18 moved to action, please.
We will move item 18, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff to an action item. Dr. Schuler.
Yeah, no additional information other than there were a few questions of clarification around a few of the items on the consent agenda, but we were able to clarify all of those elements. One thing I guess I do want to just address, there was a question that came up, there was a couple of questions around driver's education and what in fact, what authority was given to school districts a little over a year ago in the new state funding bill that went forward. So there were a couple of things that were changed on the previous mandate list. One thing I want to clarify is that it did not lift a mandate to offer driver's education. We must continue to offer driver's education. What that bill offered was flexibility around outsourcing the behind-the-wheel portion of driver's education. I do want to mention this, if you go back and look at a waiver that the school district has approved every year, you've approved a waiver around driver's education that allows you to use simulators that count as hours that would otherwise have to be recorded behind the wheel. And so I know you're looking at a big expenditure this evening around those simulators, but those simulators actually save you significant staff cost in the fact that it's reducing the number of hours that students would otherwise need in a car with probably two other students and an instructor from six to four. And again, that may not sound like a lot, but when you magnify that over the 500 students that are taking driver's education, that annual staff cost, if not for the simulators, would be increased by about 33% on an annual basis. So it is a big one-time expenditure, I do realize that, but given the life of those simulators, you save significant dollars and candidly, the fact that that's your approach. We have done a little bit of work on costing outsourcing just based on one contract that I'm aware of out there and I don't believe you can do it any cheaper by outsourcing it. So again, I just wanted to comment on those two pieces.
Just a quick question. Are we offering at both high schools the opportunity for freshmen if spots are open?
Yes, same language.
And do we offer the same number of spots in both high schools or?
The same number of sections, slightly different numbers and kinds of kids that ultimately take the enrollment, but the same opportunity.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? If not, I will ask for a motion on the second to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved. Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Husterson, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. The consent agenda is presented as fast. We will now move to action items. Will the first action item be approval of the parent handbook?
Yes.
Okay, it's approval of the 2018-19 student parent handbook. Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. So this was an item on your last board agenda that the board discussed and ultimately voted down following that meeting. We addressed some of the feedback that came from the board. I think the feedback seemed to center around two major areas within the handbook. One was the language in the actual sign-off that spoke of parents reviewing but understanding all of the contents in the handbook. And then two, there were some comments just about the general considerable nature of the handbook. So two things that have been done to address the concern raised last time, we did modify the sign-off in the handbook and so there is an updated sign-off in the copies of the handbook that were attached to this agenda item that has parents and students signing off that they have received and reviewed a copy of the handbook and understand that students are held accountable to the disciplinary policies that are in fact in that handbook. And then two, as you get to the community engagement plan for the year, you will note that the review of the handbooks is in fact on that community engagement plan for next year. We did start to look at some different iterations and organizations of the handbook and I think in order to, I think, address some of the concerns, just about ease in using the handbook, I think it's a little bit of time to look through. And so our recommendation was to move that into that plan for next year so that we do that job in the right way, certainly and address the sign-off piece for this year. So that's what's recommended for your approval this evening.
Questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
I'll start since I'm always the handbook person here. So I appreciate that it's going to be addressed next year. I appreciate that efforts were made. It's still not at a point where I can support this tonight. The words that get me stuck are two words, "and reviewed." We're still expecting the parents and the students to sign off that they have read this 60-something page handbook. I have no problems with the handbook, the length of the handbook. The handbook could be 100 pages for all I care. My issue is the discipline, again, is still stuck in the middle of the handbook. We're expecting parents to read through all this. We're expecting our students to read through all this and sign off on it and that's where I have the problem. If those two words were removed and it says that we have received it and we understand that any school-related conduct in violation of the student handbook will result in discipline, I would be fine with it. It's the "and reviewed," so as it stands right now, I cannot support the vote.
Anyone else have a comment or thought or a question?
Did our legal counsel review that language?
Yes, they did. And they're, just again, for clarity around that, there's not a legal requirement that you have a sign-off in a handbook. However, I think there are two potential issues that come up around which I think it's important for the board to do that. The school code has an incredible number of required notifications that we must provide across the community and there's, you know, when we did our audit from the ROE earlier this year, they went through our handbooks to look specifically at are all of those required notifications in fact included in there. Your attorney would definitely suggest that having that language in your sign-off certainly helps to ensure that you have in fact provided all of those required notifications. So yes, they've reviewed it. They feel that having reviewed it in there puts you in a stronger position in terms of ensuring that you've delivered that notification.
But if they're signing off saying that they have received it, isn't that that they have received the notification? That's where I struggle with it.
Dr. Schuler, doesn't the staff at the beginning of every year review with the students the disciplinary elements of the contents of the handbook?
They do, they do. And again, I guess, Chris, I'm going to come back to your question, right? There is a difference between me just saying, hey, here's the book, you got it, right? And I think a strong encouragement that you are familiar with the contents of what's in that handbook. Again, I know, see that the same way, I think it puts the board in a much stronger position having that language in the sign-off.
Any other comments or questions? Brad?
So like Chris, even though I struggle with this and kind of, even though we've been working about it two or three years, it's not where I'd want it to be. I know that we have to move forward on this and get this printed and ready in, what, nine or 10 weeks? So I'm going to support it. It's not ideal, but as I said in the last meeting, this is the one document, I think, where every student and every family in our district sees this and has the opportunity to review this. So it is an important document. So I think kind of going forward, I'd love to see some more creative thinking in the content, how it's presented, the look and feel of this, I think, kind of getting a broader, fresh set of eyes. I know it's on the community engagement plan, which is great. So, you know, we've talked a lot about this over the last three years and I don't want to talk about it again next year or so. So I look forward to really deep dive on this over the course of the next year amongst all the other things we have to talk about.
The comment, and if I could put my two cents worth in, the protocol that we follow, having it presented to us as a done deal and then we have to say yes or no, kind of precludes our being able to do any kind of a deep dive into it. So if there's some way for us to be a part of the conversation or see what's going on in the process, because I had some of the same issues that Brad mentioned in terms of how things are laid out and how it's organized. And I still, I understand Chris's concern there because I think I mentioned the last time we were talking about this. It strikes me that this should be the same as what we all experience when we go to a doctor's office with the HIPAA laws. And I'm pretty sure that one is always, here, sign off that we made this information available to you. I guess I'd have to look at the language. I don't know that it suggests that everybody stands there and reads a booklet before they sign off each time. So it seems similar to me. I understand the legal advice that maybe it's a stronger issue. I'm just wondering if it's really that necessary.
And as part of the community engagement plan for next year, this would be under the jurisdiction of the community engagement committee. Is that right, Dr. Schuler?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I ask for a motion on the second to approve the 2018-19 student parent handbook.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hamlin. Mrs. Husterson, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
No.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson? Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Vroman?
Yes. The motion to approve the 2018-19 student parent handbook has been approved. The second action item is the approval of Vision 2022.
Dr. Schuler?
Mrs. Vroman is making her way to the podium. She really has led the charge through the renewal of the Vision 2022 plan, and I think with the feedback from the board at the last meeting is here with the recommendation this evening.
Yes, it's been many months. They're now culminating into this evening. As you recall, we started this process back when we did Engage 200 and Vision 2018 was created. It is now time to update our goals and to set forth a vision for the next four years. So what you have with you is you have the one-pager that is the Vision 2022. We discussed this at length at several board meetings. And what you have here is no change in content, but we have changed some grammatical errors and made some updates on that. Since there wasn't substantial feedback on that, I thought I would spend more of the time going on to the dashboard. As you recall, at the last meeting, we had dials and arrows. They were pretty complicated and difficult to read. So what we attempted to do is to go through and make it simpler. So each of the sections, and this is just the first page, you have the other pages with you as well. For example, the percentage K8 students on the road to readiness with reading as measured by district assessments. When I do that report for the board, we would then decide at the end of my presentation, each time that that happens that year, whether we're making great progress and we've already attained it, or just making progress, or holding constant, or regressing, or at some point, those circles will also still be white because we don't have data available. So we wanted to go through that ranking system so that you and the community would see that. I know one of the struggles that we had at the last meeting was how do you define the different grades of success for all of these things? So what we are proposing is then when we go through for each of these areas and make a presentation to you, we would then make a recommendation to the board of this is the color or the level of success that we feel we're at, talk with you all at the meeting, and then decide together where that would be. We hope that by doing that, you'll have a lot of the detail that you need, but our community would also have a simple version and be able to look at those colors and see that. On our dashboard, there will also be the different reports that would be available. So if the community said, hey, I'd like to know more about the annual board report for instruction and technology, not just what color that is, there would be a link there to the board report so that they could go through and get that detailed information. Again, we're trying to find that balance between simple, but also providing all of that detail and information that the community would want. If you look through the different areas, we also struggle with what colors to use because there are new guidelines as to what could be on the website, so we've made sure that those colors would work. I'll give you a couple of minutes to look through it. And while you're thinking about those colors, I also wanted to remind you that we have this calendar of reports for the board. So we would have each month of the year when those reports that would feed into the dashboard would be coming, and then when we would update those. We do anticipate that every time, like the student learning report comes out, that we would update those particular circles. It wouldn't be we wait till the end of the year and then publish them out. So it would be something that would be changing each month as we bring a new report to the school board. One of the key things that we talked about at the last meeting was how do we build short-term and long-term plans around this vision? And we'll be meeting tomorrow with all of the administrators in the district, and we are going to go through and look at and use the appreciative inquiry cycle, and that's educational dragon. What it is, is that you look, instead of like Plan Two, Study Act, it takes a positive spin on it. So you appreciate what we've already done in that particular area, then you push it to dream, what could we do? And then you scale that back to what are the things that we could really accomplish in the next two to four years, and then start to build the plan. So we're going to meet with the administrators tomorrow, and we have eight different areas from Vision 2022 that we're going to talk about what is and some of the great things that are already happening, then move into what is dream, and then pull that back. Very important part, we're going to have eight groups of administrators all dreaming, right? We also have to think about how that impacts our staff, impacts our principals, because we can't all decide to do all of that the first year or the second year. So we're going to spend time then with our new senior leadership team members in July, after we've gotten feedback from our principals and deciding what is doable, what should our timeline be, and build short and long-term strategic plans that we can share with you and meld into school board rules as well. What questions or feedback do you have?
You go first.
Sure. So Faith, do we expect to have then these in place for fall?
There will not be long-term strategic plans for all of those by the fall. We will have to map out what resources we have, the main one being time, because we will not want to have this is all going to happen next year. If you're talking about will we have things by August of all of those plans? I do think with new senior leadership team members, we're going to need some time to look at, you know, what are all of those components? And I also believe that our principals will be an integral part of that, so we would have a few more months that we would need to do to say that we're going to have that solidified for the next four years.
Can I comment that I really appreciate all the different attempts you've made at ways to put pictures on this dashboard for us, because I've probably had the hardest time understanding what I'm looking at in the past, but this one, I could tell right away what was going on, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate that we probably weren't aware that you have parameters you have to work with in terms of picking the colors to appear on that website. So thank you for that.
Yeah, Faith, when I looked at this draft of dashboard, I was really impressed by the color scheme you did eventually planned on. I applaud you and the teaching and learning committee for developing this document. And I like the idea that the board will collectively reach a consensus on what grade to award each element of the dashboard. I think that's appropriate, and I think we have that responsibility, and we owe it to the public to be answered for that. I appreciate that approach as well.
I'll echo the dashboard comments. I like it. Well done. Quick question. On these eight items up here, do they correspond to the 21 bullet points in these four quadrants?
They do. We couldn't do all of those bullet points for tomorrow, but especially, we chose the ones that were going to be needing some sense of where the administrators are wanting to go in for as dream. And also, we wanted to go through and have multiple levels. For example, English learners and looking at the different programs that we're going to offer. Next year, we're starting some of that work with elementary, and that will spread, but we weren't ready to have that whole conversation, EC12, with all of those. So we were strategic, but that does not mean that because it's not on there that a certain bullet point here wouldn't come out in a strategic plan later on. Those are just the eight topics for tomorrow.
So I guess that kind of goes into a comment that I made the last time we met and talked about this, as well as kind of the thinking forward. So is our intent to do goal work plans every year around a selected number of these 21 bullet points?
That is, that was our, has been our process, I think, for the last four years. Again, I think as we move this summer through the work that we're starting tomorrow and continue with senior leadership team, I think we need to verify with the board that that's the process you want to continue to follow around identifying targeted work plans, but that's our thought process.
So I guess that's my point. It felt to me like every year we were just getting to the conversation about that school year, and then there was a question at this table about what does the board want to focus on? And then we decided, you know, that year, the three or four or five goal work plans we wanted to have. And so what I would like to at least try to sketch out over these four years is, do we have at least an initial plan of how we want to implement these things and what the focus is, rather than just getting to July 1st and then what are we going to do? So I mean, it's like a facility master plan. It's one thing to have all the needs figured out, but then to know how to implement it, recognize that we can change it. Things are going to happen, we're going to have to change it, but at least to have kind of a preliminary roadmap for how we would study and focus, that's kind of my request.
And I think our interest is in the same around that. And again, I think the eight topics that you see identified up there were those that we see as having the broadest impact in terms of the need for building level participation and leadership in mapping out that course of study. There's some other items on here where it may be a very department-specific item at the senior leadership. So we are still going through that process with the others, like what Faith is just mapping out of the topics that we're beginning that work around tomorrow. But I think our interests are the same.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, one question just occurred to me. So we're changing our website. One of the objectives of that is to make that more mobile-friendly. This is dashboard. How's this dashboard going to be viewable when somebody's sitting on the train looking at their phone? Is that one of the objectives?
Correct. Yeah, everything on the site's got to be able to be a thing scale.
Did I say that right, Rondo?
All right. I hereby ask for a motion and a second to approve Vision 2022 as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Vroman?
Yes. The motion to approve Vision 2022 is passed. We now move to the third action item, which is the approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-leading staff.
Dr. Schuler?
No additional information from staff.
Any questions or comments of board members?
I'll make a comment, thank you. I requested that the personnel report be moved from the consent agenda to action item as this item seeks board approval of $165,000 in annual salary increases for administrative and support staffs. Earlier this year, I voted no on the superintendent contract extension due to salary and benefit elements. On May 9th, I voted no on the four-year teacher contract, as it would increase the five-year budget deficit to nearly $23 million. Every dollar increase in salary and benefits takes away dollars needed to maintain and improve our buildings and many other needs within the district, and therefore, I will not support this proposed $165,000 increase in annual salaries for these two staffs.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question. In the last year, two years, how many administrators have we lost to other districts? Do you have an approximate?
I don't think we had any turnover the previous year. I think this year...
That summer. Didn't we have, didn't we lose maybe four, if I'm counting right?
Sorry, yes, we lost a couple out of the curriculum office, thank you.
That went to other districts?
It went to other districts out of the curriculum office, and then, that's an internal moving this year, I think, two that are leaving for purpose of going to another district.
And we're losing Dr. Panopoulos this year, too, right, for another district? So I guess part of my, you know, I think of this as what is the market? We think we need to look at that. We need to look at being able to retain quality people as well as bring quality people into our district. So I think we need to be keeping those in mind, because quality people directly impacts our students, and so I don't want us to lose that, I don't want us to lose that perspective.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one more thing. While I completely support this personnel report, I do have to abstain tonight. We have BASP aides pay scales listed on there, and my daughter is a BASP aide at Whittier, so I will be abstaining in that.
My view of this is that our administrators, we froze our compensation last year, and they've done a wonderful job, they've continued to do a wonderful job, and we're entitled to a raise. But more importantly, I've been on the board now for seven years, and over that seven years, our credit rating has improved to now we're at the second highest level. We've had balanced budgets every year. I mean, we've always had financial challenges, but we've come up with ways to meet those challenges, and we'll continue to come up with ways to meet the challenges. But at the same time, we need to compensate our administrators fairly and competitively so that we don't lose the good people we have. So I will support this personnel report as well. Any other questions, comments? If not, I would appreciate a motion and a second to approve the personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, leave of absence, administrative, certified, classified, and non-leading staff.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Abstained.
Mr. Gambiani?
No.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Vroman?
Yes. The motion to approve the personnel report is passed. That completes the action items. We now move to oral course, community engagement update and planning.
Dr. Schuler?
Thank you. And Galaknos making her way to the podium, and she's going to guide the board through what has become an annual update and projection of community engagement needs and opportunities. I just want to add one quick comment on this. So I think the board has kind of become accustomed to this placemat that it was going to take you through tonight. But I just want to point out even on this year, and I'm still thunder some of the updates that Galaknos is going to provide, but this has always been a fluid document through the year. I think in the fall, I think as a couple of board members had an opportunity to learn about some opportunities that other school districts were using to engage their community, some increase in video in some of those pieces, and brought back and shared some of that. We've in fact adjusted this document during the year, I think, in an effort to be as fluid as we can in terms of communication opportunities. So I just wanted to state, I greatly appreciate that. Community engagement has a whole different kind of level of expectation and impact in school districts, and so I would hate for us to lose sight of the importance of that effort, and I'm so appreciative of what Erica does for us, so.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. So since 2014, following the Engage 200 process, the board did hear from the community that we think what you're doing through the Engage 200 process is meaningful, it's valuable, you need to keep up that momentum. And so the board has been committed to community engagement, so much so that it has its own quadrant on your strategic plan, and this is the second four-year plan where you have that. Community parent engagement reinforces and demonstrates to our community what is happening in our schools. Often, people say they don't know what is happening in our schools, but this board is committed to engaging our community and has a staff member who is equally dedicated to that. Engaged community members support student learning. They find new and creative ways to support and enhance student learning. So first, I want to just quickly walk you through some of the highlights that we saw from the previous school year. Social media, we had an increase in 1,100 new likes on our Facebook page in one school year that is unheard of. And I think that there were a few areas that directly contributed to that. We, I really have focused on strategic scheduling of a lot of our social media. In particular, Sunday night is the hottest night of the week to post on social media. Everybody is on their phones on Sunday. Everybody is on their phones on Sunday night, sitting on the couch. And so I've really focused on scheduling a lot in the evening, but in particular on Sundays, and really tried to not only equally distribute content across all of our schools, but what is popular on social media and be strategic in seeking more of that type of content to share. So I just want to walk through a couple of items that were very positive and enjoyed by the community. One I did not include on here was information about retirements. So this past week, I've started posting, actually at the end of last week, all of the retired bios and the pictures on our social media accounts. And we started at the beginning of the alphabet, so Dr. Ramory will be up here in a couple of weeks. But the community has just gone wild. There are so many positive comments about our staff who are retiring, and it's just allowed for that kind of, a lot of sharing and commenting, and that's really what we want. Student-driven projects, anytime I share out information to the community about things that the students have done, it's gone, done very well. Individual posts from board highlights, what I started doing is after we put out our monthly board highlights emails, I then take that content and the picture associated with it and redo individual posts on social media to increase the attention on what the board is doing, exactly some direct feedback from your Engage 200 process. The community wants to know what you are doing. Our facilities team continues to be a, thank you to JR for always sending me pictures. One of our, so you see this picture, here's my clicker, of Sammy right here. This is not working. He's installing the water bottle fountain right over there. That post had more comments and shares and reach than our snow day communication. So that should just tell you something. People like to see what's going on in our schools. We've started doing just this week too, some videos and pictures of summer work that's going on, and it's really exciting for the parents and staff to see that. And we did also a snow day video with all of our facilities team shuffling and clearing snow and community loved that as well. Live in your community schools, so we started where I broadcast from my office, and we are live in a classroom, and we hear from both students and staff what they're working on. A couple of the more popular ones were right before the Christmas break. Again, this was good strategic. I know it was crazy for the schools because it was the last day before break that we did this, December 22nd. But we were live at North and South leading into the break. The high school kids and parents were showing to everybody, over their holiday grandparents, family members, so it got a lot of extra views. So that was really exciting. Our business incubator program, while not on our placemat, has been an invaluable program to us for engaging our community. The high school program alone brought in more than 100 new volunteers into our schools. And I know Whittier Elementary also had a modified version of the incubator program with their fifth graders. I know a number of our other elementaries are seeking to bring that 10-week program to their fifth graders next year. We've seen a lot more dads in schools, and that is a huge parent engagement opportunity. And I can tell you firsthand, I've heard from a couple of our volunteers for the high school program who are retired from corporate America, have done very successful, and have said, as a result of participation in this program, I now truly believe, I am proud of where my tax dollars are being spent because they are seeing how incredible our kids and the talent that our kids are, and what an amazing job our staff are doing in preparing them for their next step in life. So that incubator program has been an incredible parent and community engagement opportunity. Inside Your Community Schools talk show, so some of our board members heard from Huntley 158 at the school board conference, and we modeled a program off of that. But we did this, I'm very proud of this partnership that we developed with the city of Whitten. So the city of Whitten has a TV production studio, and it's, they will tell you, it's not fully utilized. And so they are constantly looking for new content that they can stream. So they said, we've got the studio, you bring us the people, we'll produce these videos for you. And so so far, we've pushed out four videos. We recorded another three in April that will be pushed out starting later this summer. And we've already looking at some fall dates to record another several episodes. These are on our YouTube channel. These are more so designed to be kind of timeless talk shows that we can that we can use when the time is necessary. So maybe we, there's a question that regularly comes up about how do we make the decision to close schools? Well, we've got a video on it that we can show year after year. And so as you continue to see those topics come out, you'll see that was kind of the theme, the driver behind those. So now I'm going to go through the plan highlights for the coming year. So I'm really only going to cover what's in yellow. That's what's new for this year. And I kind of, I reorganized this, as you'll see, I think the colors started to get a little too distracting on here, but I reorganized this based on four of the five bullet points that are on the Vision 2022 plan. And so the one that I did not include here at the top was to develop a, how is it more than a satisfaction survey to deter, or to determine levels of satisfaction? Because that one really needs more, needs to be more thoroughly thought out and will definitely be something we develop in partnership with the curriculum department. And so I did not include that on this plan because it is such a specific area, and it's not as broad as these other ones. So the first one is to establish regular and ongoing opportunities to engage our community members, especially senior citizens in our school. We've got a new website that's going to launch in July, so this kind of stemmed out of a lot of the new ADA requirements that are, that are out, and our website needed to, we needed to do some work on it. And part of the ADA issues you're running into was with the design of our website. Typically, districts every three to four years redesign their websites. I think we're on year five right now. And so it kind of made sense to do those all at once. So this is just, and I know Chris and Jim got a little bit of a peek, sneak peek at what that will look like. And so this is just kind of a static screenshot of the district homepage, what it will eventually look like. Really designed with the end user in mind and mobile view, and really took a thoughtful approach to engage multiple groups of stakeholders. You utilize our website so that when we go into this new design, it's designed with the end user in mind and from the feedback from various stakeholder groups. Community calendar. And so really what the goal of this community calendar is, is to, as you'll see next, one of the items that I'm going to mention is print mailing twice per year to all homes in the district. This community calendar is really designed to grab key dates from, in particular, our high schools or other district events that we want people to know about, dates for musicals, plays, key performing arts performances, key athletic events, especially maybe like our crosstown games, and add those to the community calendar and share those out with our broader community. I think sometimes people who don't have kids in our schools forget that we've got great performing arts and musical opportunities. They don't need to go to Paramount, they don't necessarily need to go to Drury Lane, but come see the musical at North or South High School. And so pushing those dates in front of people, I think, will get, be a great opportunity to get people into our buildings. One of the biggest, the main, for me, pieces of feedback we received from our citizens' advisory council, so at the end of the year, I shared with them our plan from last year, and I said, what can we take off? What do we need to add or what should stay? And one of the things, the number one thing that they said that we should do is, people read the letters that the board sent about the upcoming referendum last school year, and, I'm sorry, two school years ago, and they said, you know, we need to communicate with the community, not in print, not just when we're informing them about a potential vote that they may have to take. And so really took that feedback and what I'm almost envisioning is not a newsletter, but more of a postcard. What are some things we're celebrating? What are some things that we're working on right now? Those key community calendar dates. And so we're looking at targeting two of those throughout next school year. Next topic is to support engaged parents through ongoing workshops and relevant and timely topics. Starting this school year, I've worked very closely with Tracy Burnham, our Departmentship for Social Work, and revamping our parenting workshops. We have seen a tremendous increase in attendance, and I think part of that was because we kicked it off with a really incredible event, an event that got people excited about what we have to offer. And so we are planning to show another feature film. We were very happy to partner with our PTA council. They helped sponsor that, bringing that feature film. One of the top topics that we heard back from parents and staff that they'd like to see us address next year is anxiety with children and parents, in particular, children. And so we, I just previewed with Tracy yesterday, the film Angst. It's about anxiety, and it is incredible. And it truly speaks to both students and parents, but also embedded within the film offers really great, simple strategies on how to seek help, but how to also address those anxiety issues. And so we're looking to bring that feature film. The other topics that kind of came up again were social media and vaping. So that's something that we're going to, will be addressing this year. Student handbook, hot topic tonight. So as you'll see on, right in the middle-left column right here, in October through December, my goal is to develop leveled committees, so one for elementary, one for middle, and one for nine, twelve, comprised of various stakeholders who consume and produce that document and seek their feedback. So in October through December, that's going to be really review, seeking feedback, seeking to understand. In January through March, that's really when we'll focus on designing what the new handbooks will look like, and then also hoping to, within that three-month window, finalize what the student handbooks will look like. And then finally, April through June, bringing that back to the board for full approval. And I would anticipate that we will bring various iterations of that, not only to the community engagement committee, but also maybe a draft version of that to the board so that when you're asked, being asked for approval, it's not the first time that the full board is seeing it. So there is that. Providing the community a lens into our classrooms with a focus on communicating the changes in the world that are rapidly impacting what our students need for future success. So we shouldn't put this slide first, actually. We, I added them as new because we start, kind of started them partway through, midway through the school year, but continuing a monthly live, minimum a monthly live in your community schools broadcast will live, and it's really spreading the wealth throughout the district and continuing those inside your community schools talk shows. But then also, we have, we almost got a final commercial done by the end of the school year that we just couldn't quite get it done, but creating a series of commercials that really focus on snippets of fit, what is fit, but that are community-friendly and consumable to the community. And so we hope to have those monthly Focus on Fit commercials as an addition to those other videos. And then State of Our Schools, so I don't know how many people have seen the mayor of Whitten, Mayor Grass's State of the Schools video, or State, sorry, State of the City video. This is the second year in a row where his team has produced a video that he shows at community gatherings and then takes Q and A afterwards. And so I think, I really want to move our State of the Schools into that format. It's much more condensed, but I really loved how, while certainly Dr. Schuler does an amazing job of delivering that presentation, it allows the various superintendents to offer an update on what are they working on with their team and their staff. And it will be an opportunity to introduce some of our new staff members to the community as well. And so my proposal this year is moving that presentation to a video format. Heavenly, would be interested in feedback decided if we want to completely abandon the one-night big gathering and maybe just kind of focus it in on presenting that to smaller groups and following it with Q and A. So that is, that is one change that I want to make for the coming year. And then more social media tracking that will allow us to be more strategic. Communicate our progress on Vision 2022 and our strategic goals. So the first is expected groundbreaking of Jefferson. So that will take place in August of 2018. That is, an ongoing commitment to facilities work is in your strategic plan. And so I think creating an opportunity for, it's a public opportunity for the community to see your progress on those schools will be a very unique event. I've started pulling together lots of pictures of all of our summer facilities work, so by the end of summer, we can create a slideshow video of all of the work that took place throughout the summer. We have started, while we have little kiddos still in school, we are working on a video to roll out your Vision 2022 that you just approved tonight that will be, allow the community to understand your four-year strategic plan, but hearing it directly from the student voice. So I envision it will be narrated by Dr. Schuler, but the kids will really tell the story of what your next four years is going to look like. And so that's just some super cute pictures of like that, little ones that interviewed with us. Anytime there is a dashboard update, we will make a point to include that in either a board highlight when it was reported on, include that on our social media or in other electronic newsletters, and then also in those print communications. One thing I did not mention, or did not include in this initial draft plan that I will be putting in the final plan, including any feedback that you have, is as Dr. Schuler mentioned, Lowell is celebrating 100 years this coming school year. And so we do have a community open house scheduled for September 22nd from 9:00 to 12:00. We are going to start, starting under July 4th parade, we will have, what is it, the flag troop, can't remember, from Lowell. They're going to be marching behind you. They are awesome. I don't know if you saw them in the Memorial Day Parade, but they will be marching behind you, and also the staff will be walking alongside them, distributing small note cards with that date at that community open house. Lowell is a very interesting school community. Actually, I was just talking to a family today. She had kids that started out at Lowell and then got moved to Lincoln, and I just think there's, there's still some graduate, or still some students at South High School that went to Lowell Elementary. So that school has truly just touched so many people throughout the community, and we are really excited to invite them back to see what their school look like, looks like in the fall. So I'm done talking. What feedback can I take from you? Additions, anything you'd like to remove?
No, great job. I think it's extremely comprehensive and has helped me over the last two years going with speed. It's awesome. One of the things we heard loud and clear at our chance to chat with the students is focus on diversity. And if we could have, and I don't know what that looks like in this plan, but emphasis on highlighting all the diversity in our district, not only the students, but you know, the schools, the families. It's an amazing thing, and it's a strength, it's a strength of our district. I think that's something we should be talking more about. Thank you.
I'm super excited about the, hearing directly from the student voice, how they're going to do this, the rollout of 2022. I think that's great. And I appreciate this map. I use it quite a bit, and I love to see that we are trying, trying very, very hard to touch a huge segment of our community. I had one thing I was thinking about, because we have especially our senior citizens and trying to engage them, have we thought about working with the Park District for a like field trip for them? I know there's like, Warrenville has their lunch bunch, and you know, maybe there's something that's going on in one of our schools, they're having a music performance during the day, maybe there's matinees of our shows, you know, they can bring them that way into. Or we could Skype it and stream it to their lunch bunch if, you know, if transportation might be difficult. I know most of our park districts have some kind of transportation, but if that's difficult... I'm just trying to think of, of ways to reach that segment, that population, and get them in, get them, yeah.
So it's not on here, but last year we did have more, I guess, enhanced relationship building with a number of our senior centers in the community. One in particular that stands out is Belmont Village. So we had a group of creative writing students at North met with, there were about 30 seniors at Belmont Village, which is right off Geneva, not far from Whitten North, and they wrote
And they wrote their life memoirs for these seniors. Met with them like, three or four times. Two, it was three times, two of the three times, the bus from Belmont Village brought the seniors over to North. And their faces when they went into Wheaton North were just, they were astounded. And in particular, it was really exciting to hear their feedback about coming into a library, because they just couldn't believe how much libraries had changed. And several of them even said, "You just re-inspired me. I am so excited about what our nation, what we have to look forward to." Because the next generation of children is, they are just incredibly talented and articulate. And so, that is a relationship we wanna continue. I know Dr. Schuler has, we have a meeting coming up with some people at Windsor Park so that we can kind of solidify a little bit more of that relationship building. There's a new facility, Trevon Slitting, not far from Hawthorne Elementary. We already had some students go over to them and perform a music group. And so, that is definitely a focus for us that we have talked about with our building principals too, and how can we better facilitate those relationships, not just by sending print communications, by as best as we can, getting them into our schools, even if it is to Skype. Thank you.
So, I've been at the board five years. And I'd say the trajectory of our level of community engagement over those five years has been pretty remarkable. All really started with Engage 200 back in 2014, I believe it was. It's just changed, I think, our district and the level of engagement. So, thank you to you, Erica. Thank you to you, Jeff, for your commitment and persistence. And most importantly, always trying to make it better. We always have a plan, but we always try to make it better from one year to the next. Some of that comes from ideas that we get from the school conference in November, which was the whole push on the video this year. So, great work. And you know, we talked a lot about the 70% or whatever that number is of the number of people in our community that do not have kids currently in the school, and how can we keep them engaged? And this plan kind of shows that all of the information is out there. And so, we're trying to touch them, whether it's print, social media. Everybody who wants to be informed of what our school district is doing, it's available to them. And so, this plan, and really, I guess the importance of community engagement is all about being as transparent as possible. You know, one of the things that we always hear is be transparent. So, there is not anything available or unavailable to our community that they can't easily find in any location, whether it's on their phone, or on their computer, or in their mailbox. It's all available, or in the kid's backpack. It's all available. Sharing the progress of the district, getting people engaged. But I think most importantly, you know, the community engagement is all about promoting the success of our students and the success of our district. And that establishes a brand of what our school district and even bigger than what our community is. So, I think community engagement as designated, you know, as represented in one of the four quadrants is so important. I love the annual schools, State of Schools presentation, moving to video. I think that's fantastic, because you know, it's one thing to have people show up on that one night that we do this, or the two nights we do this, and then try to watch a video. But to be able to promote that in all kinds of different manners is fantastic. I like the idea of the Vision 22 video, 2022 video also. I think it's in this plan, but I think the two super-important things for us to focus on was always be telling the community what our facility work is. That's been a big part of our conversation over the last couple of years. But to constantly reinforce, we are getting stuff done based on our priorities and based on our facility master plan and you know, with the limited resources we have. But also to continue to explain to our community why and how education is changing, and why the needs, how the needs of students are different today than they were, you know, even 10, 15 years ago. So, I think those two, I love all the content. I love the evolution of some of the use of video and lessons learned from our past. But I think, you know, those two things are gonna be so important for us to continue to reinforce constantly to our, to our community at large.
Can I also put in my word, I'm very, very pleased at how quickly you took that information from the Fall Conference and ran with it, and all of a sudden we had these videos coming out. That was amazing. I've enjoyed it. Helps me understand what's going on in the schools. It's great on those Facebook Live segments to watch the kids getting involved, because they're obviously very excited to be sharing what's going on in this school. And I think that does help that, as Brad said, 70% of our population, it doesn't have any connection to the school, to see what's going on and to see how things have changed. And especially when we're talking about innovations in education and things that we're doing, and especially when they come with a price tag, this makes it more concrete, we can actually see it. So, I appreciate your efforts in that area.
Thank you.
Erica, Chris Crabtree and I are beginning to fill out the application for the School Board Governance Award from the IAASB, which we've won the last three times. We're the only school board in the state that's won it three times in a row. Been awarded it three times in a row. We're hoping to make the fourth. But the questions that are asked, at least the first two, and Chris is working on the last three or four, focus on the importance of the school board needs to communicate with the community. And we're referencing a lot of the work you're doing in response to that. So, it's so important in the eyes of the association, but it's so important for every school board in the state to be able to communicate. And we appreciate the tools you're giving us to be able to communicate with our residents. So, thank you.
Just making one other quick comment, and that's, well, it's not a new piece. We do continue to note on there, I continue to work with the Citizens Advisory Committee. That committee was 36-strong this year. I think really representing the, kind of the, in Rob's work, the word, the diversity of our community and helping us to wrestle with some issues that would be in front of the district. And so, we recently put out a call for additional applications for that committee. We've had some folks that have served for three years on CAC and have kind of said, it's time now to roll off and let somebody else have that opportunity. So, that application is out there and encourage people to look at it. And I know your very next discussion this evening on a policy may engage an opportunity around engagement. And I think CAC would be a ripe opportunity for that, so.
And speaking of the next item on the agenda, it is a discussion item. Discussion of Policy 7.40, non-public school students, including parochial and homeschool students. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Broman. So, in the, in the board packet, there was, posted a memo that provided some background and context for the discussion tonight. And the document was developed both to capture some of the questions that board members had asked, I think to reflect some of the feedback from the last meeting and the discussion that we had, as well as to, I think, capture and look at some of the feedback that we've gotten from community members over the last couple of months since Policy 740 was revised. And I think it's been noted in public comment, the original version of 740 was developed some 17, 18 years ago. And certainly did create a path for our homeschool community to participate in IHSA activities. I think the process around which that is to happen, again, was identified tonight under, under public comment. But admittedly, there is one step in that process in our original policy that was not happening. And that's that we were working with families around how it is that we go about establishing the courses that they were using to be their academic program that allowed them to participate under either of the high school names. Certainly, we were monitoring for eligibility throughout the semester. But that IHSA requirement does clearly say that those credits do have to then be recorded on a transcript account toward graduation. And so, there's a gap there in what has been happening in practice, certainly over the last number of years. There was actually, in the original version of the policy and the corresponding administrative regulations, there was actually a limit to the number of homeschool credits that actually could count toward graduation at 12. Again, my assumption is that set of administrative regulations were developed at the same time that the original policy was. We don't have a date on that set of administrative regulations. I think, Sir Houston, you asked about that, and there just simply isn't a date on that document. So, that, my assumption was it was developed around that same time. So, a little bit of background, just in terms of driving change, which we've captured. There was a change at IHSA level that moved from four to five classes that were required for students to be attending. And so, in looking both at that change, as well as our, our high school administrators and reviewing the process, I think it was mentioned a little bit earlier in public comment tonight, that we did, as we were starting to certify programs, see the names of some schools that were coming up regularly. I want to reiterate, that wasn't the rationale for the review of the policy. As we got into studying and looking at this, truly, the driver for looking at a change was that issue of the fact that those courses were not being counted on a transcript toward graduation. And so, as our current high school administrative team now tasked with carrying that policy out, really started to investigate, what does that mean? What does that look like? And what are the implications around which we grant credit toward graduation? There are clearly a couple of other policies that relate to that in 6310. Certainly, you've got a policy that stipulates, obviously, not only the number of credits that a student would need to accumulate, in fact, to graduate, but kind of those distribution requirements. But in working through that analysis, I think there was some concern about how, in fact, that process could happen. And that led to ultimately the recommended policy change that we put in front of the board. I will tell you, on the part of the school district, and I think you've received some comments certainly on this, there was no intent to deliberately shut out a portion of the community. We, in earnest, looked at a policy that we had some concern about and brought forward a recommended policy change. Clearly, there's been some concern around that. And so, our goal tonight, I think, is to get some direction from the board around a couple of areas that both the board has expressed some concern, some feedback, and the community has as well, to really kind of drive us moving forward. And really, I think around a couple of questions. Some questions in terms of, are there some elements to this that you want to change immediately? As well as, are there some elements to this that you do, in fact, want to take a step back and study over the long term? And how do you want to do that? And so, at the end of the memo that we provided, I did identify, I think, six different questions that I urged the board to think about coming into tonight to provide some directions. Those questions include, what if any stipulations you want to put on extracurricular participation at the elementary or middle school level? And the board feedback to date has really suggested that any change to this policy probably ought to focus on IHSA governed high school activities and reopen the middle and the elementary piece. But we want to get that feedback from the board. Do we have concern about the potential impact of ineligible and ineligible athlete participating? I agree with the comment that was made earlier, that this is a local policy decision. But there is a relationship between this policy and the governing organization over your high school sports. And that's that if we are, in fact, not following one of the bylaws in IHSA, we do run the risk of our programs not being able to participate. So, my assumption would be, yes, there is a, there would be concern around that. Question three, should the process of the rules that govern granting credit toward graduation be the same for all students, regardless of full or part-time status? So, Policy 6310 does govern for your students that attend schools in full time? What are the opportunities that your students at your high schools have to be granted or to solicit additional credit that counts toward graduation from other sources other than just the courses that we offer? What are the concerns with the requirement to grant credit, to grant graduation credits? And again, can those concerns be alleviated? I'm not sure if that's a question that can be answered tonight. Maybe one that you put on a study. And then, does the board want to put in place a provision that allows for those that are already in the system, those that have been participating previously under either of our high schools to be grandfathered until the completion of their high school tenure? And what level of community engagement do you want in terms of moving this forward? And again, I highlighted, I think, one opportunity that certainly would be available if, in fact, you want some additional community input or dialogue around specific elements of this. So, again, I provided this, the memo, I think, with a number of questions and answers. I don't know that, I'm happy to go through all of the questions, but the board had an opportunity to review those. I guess I would be more interested in kind of guiding you right into the discussion tonight and see what progress.
Before we go into the discussion, can I ask a question though in terms of procedure?
Sure.
So, is, what is the timeline look like? If we were to say tonight, we would like to grandfather those students, as well as, say, incoming freshmen, our middle schools, what does that look like in terms of, would they be able to participate this fall?
Yes. Yes, so you're, obviously, you do still have a, any policy change is gonna have to go back through your, your policy change process. But if the board tonight expresses a desire to continue to allow those already in our system to do so, we can begin that. So, you do not, you're not gonna create a gap here.
So, we would be posting then, the, so whatever that grandfathering looks like, and inclusive possibly of incoming freshmen as well, that could be posted in July for an August vote for them to be able to participate in fall?
Correct.
And the same would hold true for the middle school programs, not much for the project.
Can I jump in here? All right. I'm gonna jump right to the middle of some of the comments I had planned to make and just say that this is a much bigger issue than we can hash out at tonight's meeting. And there's no question in my mind about that. Every time some explanations are offered to us, I have a million more questions running through my brain. And I'm seeing inconsistencies in what I think I've heard and what I'm hearing and what I've heard from a million different sources. Back in March, when the policy committee first heard about this, I really, truly, what I heard sitting there was, "We need to make a few changes to a policy so that we are in keeping with IHSA regulations." And one of the comments was, you know, "There was an easy move from the 45 required classes." And then there was the question, what I thought I heard was, "And we have a problem because we have to grant credit towards graduation for these courses, and we're not doing that. So, we must do this and this must change." I didn't do a thorough reading into the policy at that point. It was only after that that I read the policy and I saw that it said, "We give credit for these courses," which raised my first big question. Well, just because we're not doing what we said we would do does not suggest we have to change something. It just suggests we need to figure out why we're not following our policy. So, that was one of my first big flags, went up on this. So, I want to take a second to acknowledge all the families that are here and who've spoken to us, because I really appreciate their input. And we've gotten a lot of emails. It's been an incredibly respectful community in the way they've talked to us. They have helped enlighten us, explain to us what this has looked like over two decades. And I think we need to appreciate that. So, I appreciate, I understand their outcry, because this all came very quickly. We really didn't notify them, I think, along the time that we should have. And I feel for these families that thought they knew what their plans were and all of a sudden saw changes. I, so I understand, the procedure is we have to tell the administration what we want them to bring to the July meeting for us to post for 30 days, and then we'll go on it in August. I absolutely would propose that we restore access to our programs to the elementary and middle school students, because there was no reason why they had to be touched by any kind of IHSA changes. I would love to see us restore access to, as Brad said, high school students who have been in sports in progress, as well as those incoming freshmen who thought they knew what they were doing. I know for my own children, I sat down when they started high school and planned four years with them. So, it makes sense to me that these people thought they knew where they were headed and all of a sudden they didn't. So, I hated hearing about a student who, in the midst of what I believe is our blunder this spring, all of a sudden couldn't take part in the spring. this spring, all of a sudden couldn't take part in the spring's sport. That makes no sense to me at all. I like the idea of convening a committee to take the time, to give proper consideration to all of the elements of this, because it seems to me, we would be going back and thinking about the same issues that that original committee did back in 2000, 2001, that came up with the original policy 7.40. And I know from talking to people, that they considered all of the things that I've heard thrown out around this table, which include, is there a way to allow home school students to participate in our programs and make it fair for both them and for our full-time students? Do we have concerns about granting credits? What can we do to alleviate that? There are a whole lot of options that we should be discussing, in my mind. What are our questions for IHSA? We've asked, as a board, many of us individually, specific questions about IHSA. We haven't had a lot of answers, and the most recent answer was, that they can't give us a specific answer to one of our questions. To my mind, if they can't answer the question, then they can't rule somebody ineligible because of what we do. They wouldn't give us guidance in the first place. So, I become less and less worried about ineligibility all the time. And I think we need to decide how much importance we want to give to the relationship that has grown up over the last two decades between the home school community and District 200. Yes, it was people 17 years ago who decided that home school students should be able to participate in our programs, but given that that's what happened, over the last 17 years, our community is involved. It's become a part of the context of our community. And whether we decide that we want to continue that relationship or not, we at least need to discuss it and decide, you know, how we come to that conclusion. So, if changing 7.40 means that we're realizing we have other policies that are a little out of whack, so we can fix those along the way, if we need to fix them, I think that opens some conversations that maybe we need to have about what kinds of opportunities we want to allow our students. So, I don't think it's as simple as, we limit these students, so we can't allow those students. Maybe, as someone said, we shouldn't be limiting our students quite the way we are. And part of that is, part of the conversation that we started last year about, or in the fall, about redefining ready. So, these are all, they're just, you know, here I am going on and on, but I have spent so much time trying to understand this issue. I've been looking into the history. I've been looking into our current implementation versus our stated policy. I've talked to home school families. I've talked to people in the community that do or do not have anything to do with home school families. I've looked at the policies in our districts that we have competed with in the past, and the districts that we're going to compete with in the future. I had a conversation with anybody who will talk to me about this. And it just tells me that there's a whole lot that we all need to talk about. So, I've rambled, but basically, I agree with some of the things Chris had said. I think we ought to back up, re-grant access to activities to people who have been having them or who thought they were planning on it. And whether it's the CAC or whatever kind of committee, I think we definitely want a voice of home school affiliates in that mix. But I think we need to take time over the next year to figure out what it is we want to do as a long-term solution.
I'm sure I'll have a few more comments later, but just to kind of iterate off what you said. I appreciate all the work you've done. There's no doubt you have done a ton of work helping us get through this process. I think the first thing I want to just clarify is, we did follow the right process. You know, and if the process doesn't work, we have nothing. So I do believe we did follow the right process. Now, I think we did do our due diligence as a board, maybe, and interpreted the data differently, but the process was followed. I think that's really important, because we're going to have a new process going forward to, you know, figure our way through this, and that the process has to have integrity. Secondly, I read, I actually went and downloaded and read the protest penalty in bylaws of the IHSA, which is policy six. It's as vague as you'd expect it to be. It's really, really vague, and in fact, it references specific sports. I'm not sure why. But it does give the executive director the power to recommend or request affirmative corrective action up to and including suspension and expulsion. And we can't ignore that. They may never do it, right? They may never do it. But we can't ignore that in the discussion we have. And I think we have to remember that. Because not only, you know, empathy for homeschoolers has to be equally matched with empathy for those that are full-time students participating in sports that could be subject to discipline, even if they may not, if it may not happen. Because if it did happen, we'd have zero explanation of why we didn't follow the policy. So I think in our conversation, it has to be balanced to take into consideration both sides of that, or both types of participants in the sport. I would support what you suggested, which is, whether it's a grandfather clause or allowing students to participate while we figure this out, I would support that. But I will say, that should not be an indicator of future direction. You know, I think I will be expecting a more specific definition of what constitutes that participation, which could be limiting. And so I don't want people to expect that if we do grandfather or open it, it won't go back to being limiting, because it could, as we get more clarity around this. And so, I think part of the process, and I think it's right that we exercise this, we look at it, but if we were to grandfather and vote that way or decide that way, it doesn't mean it's forever. You know, because the result of that revision could be more limiting. So I want to make sure we remember that. I just go back to say, I appreciate the work the staff has done, the administration's done, the policy committee, the process, it works. And that's really, really important, in addition to the community engagement. And all the emails we've received, and all the comments we've received the board made. So it's really, really good. But that has to be balanced with empathy for everyone who's participating in sports, and what it means to the integrity of a diploma. And I get everything, you know, just because we've never had this situation, doesn't mean it won't happen. It takes one lawsuit, and I think we need to remember that. And I'm not saying we are overly concerned about it, or be highly risk averse about it, but we need to consider it in the conversation.
I have a question for clarification on credit for graduation. Because in my mind, I can understand what that means, but is there a way to have some stipulations in what are requirements for graduation? I mean, if we're issuing credit for graduation, but there are other things somebody needs to do to be able to get a diploma, then there are no worries that somehow, somebody would have gotten a diploma from us without ever stepping foot into our schools, if we have other criteria that's required for graduation? Am I right? Am I?
Can you give me an example of what other criteria you might be talking about?
Oh, okay. Well, Brad has.
I had the same observation in my thinking about question four, about student must be granted credit towards graduation by the member school for the work taken either at the member school or in a program that approved. I think a simple statement adding to that that says, to be eligible to receive a district diploma, home school students must comply with the requirements of policy 6.300, just like every other student. I think that's simple little land, not in a term, that simple little language could kind of tie these things together, that they can be granted credit towards graduation, but they're not going to get a diploma from one of our high schools unless they meet the requirements of that policy. I think that maybe is a simple, simple 20-word statement that maybe that ties that together. That was my thinking for question four.
But what's keeping someone from participating in classes outside of the district that have credits towards graduation? And we'll say, look, you're not going to get a diploma because you have a different transcript. But technically, they could get a diploma based on what they completed because it counts towards graduation. Do we have the right to deny them a diploma? I don't know the answer to it, but I think it's something we need to consider.
And I guess that's what I was saying, is our policy 6.300 says, here's what our students need to do to receive a diploma. That, I think that was attached. Those are the requirements. There's 24 credits, and pass this test, and there's a variety of other tests. So, you know, I think, I think a simple statement like that, referring back to that policy, in my opinion, could very cleanly simplify that angst over granting credit.
And it very well could. You know, Brad, I do think, in fairness, then, to, I think, some of the broader discussion, though, I think there's some implication around that. So, you know, again, I think if you look just at the administrative procedure, the current administrative regulation stipulates that only 12 credits taken in the home school environment could count toward a diploma. So, what's the meaning of that? Does that mean when you get to credit 13, 14, and 15, that you're accumulating, if they cannot count toward, you know, accumulation of credits toward a diploma, are they counting toward graduation? There may be a simple answer to that, and you might be right, but I just, I, if we're going to take a step back and study some of the elements to it, that's one that I just think we really need to think all the way through.
Those administrative procedures are not decisions of the board, right? But our discussion might inform how we adjust, or you adjust those, right?
Yeah. I would agree, that, you know, as I think I've shared, that particular administrative procedure, I think there's some elements to that that absolutely should be part policy, though. I mean, I think that, that's a stipulation around graduation, that absolutely board may be entirely comfortable with it. That probably then ought to make its way into your policy around graduation, right? I mean, that, to me, feels like a policy statement that's buried in an administrative procedure. And again, I don't know the history on that, but I think we need to probably explore that.
Can I ask, what exactly is an administrative regulation? I think it's what, it's AR 7.40. Is that policy which comes from us? Is that the administration's decision on how to implement policy that we drafted?
Yeah, there intended to be implementation guidance around policies. So, PRESS, the policy service you belong to, does also have recommended administrative procedures that they put out and deal simply with, how do you implement this policy regulation? So, that's the intent, I think, of administrative regulations or procedures.
I had not seen this administrative regulation until Friday of this last week. What I did find when I was researching other districts was that while administrative regulations like this did not show up in the table of contents of their policies, if you hovered over, in this case, 7.40, all of a sudden up would pop administrative regulation 7.40. On the chart that I put together that showed similar policies at other schools, I listed that, whichever schools I had found out on, and it, so it was directly there so you could see it. It seems odd to me that, as board members, we have a policy manual, we're not even aware of administrative regulations. I don't know how many more of them there might be that have to do with any of our other policies. That one obviously has to be tweaked, because the strangest thing about that policy to me was, I've been asking about the possibility of making these classes pass fail, because all along, since March, I've been reading policy 7.40 that says, we will be taking the grades that the parents give us and putting them on a transcript for District 200. And then there was a lot of conversation about, how do we protect the integrity of what's a C in American history that's coming to us from home and not from a teacher within our district? Well, the administrative regulation says we give them pass fail credit, and our policy says we give them a grade. So, right there, which one were we pretending to follow? Because I don't think we were actually giving them a grade anywhere. So obviously, we have to fix that as well. And if we can give, if we're giving them pass fail credits, those are real credits. We don't seem to have any rules about how many pass fail credits actually, they all count towards a diploma, but you have to have a certain number of grades, with actual grades, to get the diploma. I've had this conversation with, I'm not, I don't even remember who amongst you at this point, but as an example, in a college, most colleges that I've been aware of will allow students to take a certain number of classes in a pass fail way. And once you hit, say you can take three classes pass fail over the course of four years, you're going to have an advisor that at some point, when you go to sign up for that fourth classes pass fail class, is going to say, oops, no, you hit your limit. We're not going to give you any more pass fail options. You have to take grades in the rest of your classes. Well, if our administrative regulation says we've been giving them pass fail credit in these classes all along, well, they still count towards graduation, because it's up to them. If they want to take 20 classes pass fail, but they still have to show up and take another 20 with a grade, that's a choice they can make, and it's up to them, whether they show up for the ones with the grade, or whether they just decide they're going to settle for the ones with pass fail. So I mean, again, this is another one of these puzzles that we could be talking about for days and weeks and months, that we're not going to solve tonight. But just wanted to be aware that it's an issue, and there's a whole lot of different things we have to discuss here.
And I would like us to really take a good look at 6.310 as we're doing this, and I think the committee, whatever is involved, takes that into consideration. You know, I sit on, with Jenna, on the teaching and learning committee. We are piloting a class in the fall that's a blended learning opportunity for our students. And I think that we need to start looking at that big picture. What does, you know, one of our, one of the people tonight spoke about, what does it look like? This policy 7.40 was written 17 years ago. It's very different now. And it's very different in terms of how we learn. And I can, I have a child, as I'm looking at the correspondence courses that we say must be a fourth or fifth year senior, my daughter's a sophomore took a correspondence course. And so, I want to be sure that what we have in place is truly what we're, number one, what we're doing, but is it still relevant today? I mean, I think learning has changed so much over the past few years, that combinations of things are, and we want so much in terms of differentiation for kids, I think we need to look at this a little bit more carefully and broaden it to what it's right for a student today. So, as we're looking at 7.40, I really want us to, at the same time, study 6.310.
Well, I agree with a lot of what's been said tonight. I agree that we ought to eliminate or carve out the middle school activities and the non-IHSA activities from 7.40. I agree that a grandfather provision is appropriate. People have made plans for years, for a number of years, for their students to be able to participate based upon the original version of 7.40, and the modifications that made to that policy in March, pull the work from underneath them. It would also give us time to look at how the policy should be revised and made consistent with policy 6.310 as well, so that all students, whether they're home schooled or are paying full time, are treated fairly and equally. I also appreciate that, two years ago, we formed the community action council, citizen advisory committee, I'm sorry, citizen advisory committee. I think we have a standing committee that's available to wrestle with this, and I invite members of the home school population to send an application and become members of that council, so that we can get your input as well. And I think it's important that we not have only the input from home school parents, but from residents, parents of full-time students, so that we have a comprehensive picture of what needs to go on, and what we need to do. I know you guys got tired of my commencement speech that I gave twice, and my emphasis on the declaration that each principal gave, that students at commencement who graduated had met the requirements to receive a diploma from the state of Illinois in this district. And that has a lot of meaning to me, and I think it has a lot of meaning to all of you, that our diploma is doing a lot, and that if we are going to live within the IHSA rules, and agree with the law, we can't dismiss totally the chance that there might be an enforcement action. I agree that it's minimal right now, whether it's a formal way or retired way. I would advise my client, in such a situation, that there always is a risk. And we must account that. In the IHSA rules, we require five credits toward graduation, earning a diploma from one of our schools. And I don't want to diminish or the meaning of that declaration we've heard from both of our principals during that commencement address, and the meaning of what that diploma means to our full-time students. So, Jen, I agree, there's a lot to think about and contemplate and roll over and study. And I think by the changes that Jeff's kind of highlighted here, that I think we're some... And I think by the changes that Jeff's kind of highlighted here, that I think we're somewhat endorsing here, some of the objects, grandfathering of provision, carving out the middle school and high school non-IHSA activities from rule seven point four zero, and then assigning this to what I would propose, the Citizens Advisory Committee, with homeschool representation on that committee, to study the problem and see if we can come up with a resolution. They've done great work in the past in giving us some guidance, and I think they can do that again.
Well, I just make one comment, Rob. We are where we are tonight because the process didn't work, okay? That, I don't want to be argumentative, but seventeen years ago, the process seemed to work. There was a collaboration that went on, involved parties, they landed at a spot where everybody could, you know, work and embrace that. And so, I know we do have policies that we follow, and processes we follow, but this one, this was a, this was a swing and a miss. So I think it's important that we acknowledge, Jenna and you guys have done a lot of hard work, a lot of research, based on the comments I've heard tonight, everybody's conflicted in this matter. There's so much information, and none of it's matching up, and supporting and complementing each other. There's too many, too many elements that are disagree with each other on paper, so I, like Mr. Berman here, I'll support whatever the board wants to kind of retrace our steps, and get something on the agenda in July for posting and possibly approval in August, but do it with collaboration and the right people who's really studied. But I'm not that person who's done a lot more work. There's people on this board who've really dealt into this, this material far deeper than I. So, we've got to have the right people in that, in that relationship, and I'll support that one hundred percent.
Hi, thanks. One, I want to talk about the Citizens Advisory Committee. I'm not sure if that's the right body. I'm not saying it's not, I'm just not, I think about it, because this is the first time we've kind of talked about that idea with this topic. Would we have the appropriate representation of those that are affected? Because I think it'd be, the homeschool community would probably be a small number of people in that dialogue. Is there a way to restructure or subcommittee where you could have a more equal balance? Does that make sense? I don't know if I'm, maybe even a little reacting to it, I'm not sure. It just sounds, my first reaction is, it doesn't seem like it's balanced enough. I don't know.
Yeah, I guess, to answer that question, Rob, I think it depends on who you want studying this. Again, I guess what I would suggest is that, well, the immediate impact obviously falls on the homeschool community. I think there is an impact of this policy on the entire system.
Agreed, agreed, absolutely.
So that's, you know, so what, I guess it comes down to, do you want a group that kind of represents the totality of the system? Or, you know, are you looking to create this with, I guess, a very specific composition? All right?
No, no. The only thing I was reacting to was, I thought I heard Mr. Berman say, you know, the homeschoolers are welcome to apply this at Citizens Advisory Committee. That process, and how long it would take, I don't think we'd be able to get this done. I don't, you may have just been in there, I'm just saying, I may not be in time to get it to the right spot. I may have misunderstood, did you?
It's not that complicated.
That's fine.
It's not that complicated a process. We always look for people to join the Citizens Advisory Committee, and all they have to do is contact Dr. Schuler and put the name on the list. And for something like this, I think we'll ensure that our representation.
I guess I just want to offer, make sure that I'm, we have common expectation around this. I think in terms of engagement, looking at some of the longer-term issues around this, I think the recommendations that we would bring back in July, in terms of immediate modifications to the policy you just outlined. So I'm not assuming that, that whatever committee you utilize to study this in the long term is meeting pre-July, when you are getting some modifications coming back. I think that is, again, I think a longer-term issue, and I think, you know, maybe off to a point, that I guess I just don't want to, so that there are some elements to these policies that conflict, but by the very nature of the policies, that ultimately over, you know, have to have interplay. So, I think some of the, some of the contradiction in terms of putting things together is that there are some complicated elements to this, especially when you bring in policy six three one oh, and all of those impacts. And so, I think in trying to kind of wrestle with all of these pieces, and bringing six three one oh into the full, that is going to take a little while, there's no doubt about it. That's not July conversation.
I've been kind of quiet on this, but little story, I was with a neighboring high school school superintendent today, and I asked him, through work, he says, how do you deal with homeschool students who want to participate in their sports? And he said, ah, they got to, they got to enroll in school and take five classes. They don't have that many, that's just the latest. I think, unlike the rest of this board, you know, I don't think any intention ever was to exclude, try to create a policy that didn't allow that to happen, that we all want our students who are homeschooled to be able to participate in sports. But I understand the value of teamwork, and participation, and recreational, that's, I don't think anybody wants to create a policy that says, or a practice where they have to take all the classes in our schools. So, I'm agreeing with all the conversations we've had. The one thing that I want to reinforce is that, I don't think I want a separate committee focused on this. We have the Citizens Advisory Committee, which was set up for the purpose of weighing down, weighing in on these issues, and providing some recommendations to the superintendent. There is so much going on in this district in terms of the Vision twenty-two that we just adopted, changes to the senior leadership team, new principals, major facility and financial issues, which are going to be occurring over the next several years. I understand the value of having that kind of input from that portion of the community. We, I think I pretty much understand what that, what that input's going to be, but I endorse the idea of trying to push that into the Citizens Advisory Committee as a core topic to start the beginning here. I prefer to do that than set up a whole separate task force or committee to study this. That would be my opinion.
And I agree with Dr. Schuler in this, you didn't say this, but the implication on her was that we don't, we don't want the calendar to drive this, we're going to, we've got to get it right, right? We've got to really focus on it, and invest the time and effort in it, so we do get it right, so we can move forward. And we want to do that expeditiously, clearly, but there are a lot of very difficult conversations that we had to land at some policy. So I think we just keep that in mind, you know, let's not let the calendar drive this. We've got to be proactive and responsible from timeline standpoint, but I think it's, let's not make another, not an error per se, but let's get it right on the next effort, next try.
One other kind of question that might be helpful, this is my best last comment. Could you, not necessarily tonight, but in July, explain kind of the process, the impact on our school administrators or the high school, in terms of what they have to do? How much time does it take? You know, what kind of attention are they not being able to focus on some other issues in our schools? Can you give a little window on what the, what the workload, so to speak, and what kind of bandwidth is taken up to deal with this issue?
This is just a discussion. All right, moving on. Written reports, we've all received the monthly financial report from May, we've also received the early learning center budget update. Glad you asked me to come in on that.
So just a quick update for you on the budget update in the written, or written report number two. So a couple of things the Facility Committee has done, and progress we've made over the past maybe some month or so, is a few weeks ago, the senior leadership team, school leadership at Jefferson, teachers at Jefferson, and myself, Rob, did you make it, did I make it?
No.
Went over to Leggett Art Text, did a little walkthrough, virtual walkthrough of the building, looked at a lot of details of the furniture, discussed a level of detail that was pretty impressive, actually. So, kind of got the opportunity to experience the design virtually, as we were making progress. About a week ago, we met with Nicholas Associates Leggett, and talked about the alternate bids that are attached to, the proposed alternate bids that are attached to this written report. These are designed and selected to provide some flexibility and choice at the board when we approve bids, to make sure that we're aligning the project budget with the actual visitor being submitted by the market. So those are important tools to enable us to make decisions about making sure we stay within budget. It's important to hear what the market says the cost is going to be. Remember, these are just estimates at this point in time. This is just a prediction of how the market's going to be responding during competitive bidding. On this list, you see, most of these are functional, operational, quality issues, typical, typical kind of alternate bid you would see. I do want to call your attention to number two specifically, that's the work in the interior courtyard. That does have a direct impact on student learning and the student experience in our schools, it's been a very important part of the design process to this point. A lot of input on that's gone into it, it's not just landscaping, this is a central element of the learning spaces that we're creating. So, we need to watch this one, something is definitely going to have to be completed in that beyond the base bid. So, it just provides some flexibility for us to make decisions on an important piece of the design. I will say, the budget, we decided, or realized last week, is still carrying a lot of money for technology and audio visual, visual, visual work. That's an area the team felt a little bit deeper analysis was going to be required to make sure we're not overlapping assumptions and making kind of earmarking budget dollars that could have been otherwise aligned with other parts of the budget. So that's a separate track that has to take place. But, you know, as the, as the report says, we're on budget, we're making decisions to give the board some flexibility when we get to bid day in a few weeks, and I think the next action item for the board will be to authorize going out to bid to the marketplace to submit their proposals and actually to start the construction.
Brett, just, I'm a novice at this, how do, how do the alternate bids, who creates those? I mean, what's the mindset to say, we need an alternate bid for twenty-seven additional onsite parking spots, as an example?
The team talked about those, you know, Nicholas says they were getting some cost input back from the marketplace. It's typical for the construction manager to go out to individual contractors, look at different types of the scope, get some, get some feedback on major components, and then compare that to what was being held in, in the previous estimates, and held in the budget and the previous estimates that they had presented. And so there's a discussion about, you know, where's the bigger dollars, you know, what are the things that can be very discreetly bid as an alternate bid, a separate price, so to speak, that wouldn't have an impact on other elements of the project, that could be added later perhaps. So there's no one criteria established, but there's a, it's just a series, it's a team discussion, a series of conversations and decisions that kind of outline a framework for providing separate prices for discrete elements of the project. It's really all about, as I said, providing that flexibility, that when we get the bids, we can add to it or deal with it, depending on how the market responds. I'll repeat again, we've got a budget, we are doing estimates as the process develops based on what we think is happening in the marketplace, but through a competitive bidding process, the market's going to tell us how much this investment costs. I mean, this gives us the flexibility to, to have discussions and make decisions, to make sure that we're still going to, in the end, align with the overall budget, or come in underneath it.
Thank you.
And the other written reports include the wellness policy report and the FOIA report. Do we have reports from other board members, board committee reports that were posted? Are there other reports from board members? The topics for future discussion include the early childhood center, the authorization to go out for bid, the twenty eighteen, nineteen budget development. Our next regular meeting is July eleventh, two thousand eighteen, at seven PM, School Service Center. Are there public comments for non-agenda items?
Yeah.
Well, there being no further action to come before the board in open session, I hereby ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There are no opposed, we are hereby adjourned.